Good evening. We represent Woodville Student Lighthouse Team. I'm Olivia.
I'm Abel.
I'm Gabrielle.
And I'm Yeh.
Last November, our school guidance counselor, Ms. Caswell, came to us with a request. She wanted us to help solve the problem with loneliness and bullying on the playground. We decided that the buddy bench was the answer.
First, we created a video proposal for Woodville's PTO to ask for funding. Next, we reached out to Mr. Rozell, Highlands High School. Mr. Rozell, along with his talented students, we, talented students were eager to build our buddy bench.
The idea behind the buddy bench is that if somebody is feeling lonely or left out or needed a friend, they can sit on the buddy bench and then other students will know that they need a friend and can ask them to join a game or just sit and talk. Once the bench was completed, our art teacher, Mrs. Fryman, helped us design contests for all students, grades, grade kindergarten to fifth grade. I'm Cambray Crawford. I am a third grader at Woodville. My design won the contest. Together, Mrs. Fryman and I painted the bench for our school.
On Unity Day, October 18th, the buddy bench was unveiled. Every Woodville student signed the bench pledging to stand up to bullies and showing kindness to those in need. The entire project was a huge example of synergizing. We are proud of our idea. Proud our idea became reality and is making a difference in our school.
And I am Mrs. Gervin. Our initiative at Woodville is to be a blue lobster, make learning unique, make it memorable. And I believe that this project was a true example of that. The pride on Unity Day when every kid was signing that bench, it was one that I will always remember. And the collaboration involved amongst the art teacher, the guidance counselor, Mr. Rozell, his students at the high school, our student lighthouse team and our PTO was a true example of collaboration. And it's kind of an awesome, an awesome example. And that's what our district is, true collaboration.
Well, thank you. Does anybody have any questions you want to ask?
How long has the buddy bench been in existence? So how many days has it been since Unity Day, I guess?
Unity Day was October, uh...
Like a month or two?
Okay. Is it getting used a lot?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Uh, today at school, there was this girl named, uh, Har- or Parker, but she was sitting on the bench and this other first grade student, she walked up and asked if she wanted to play tag. And they started running around and I saw them and I was okay with them too.
Have any of you guys had a chance to check in on somebody sitting on the buddy bench?
Uh, yeah, the first thing that was, um, I saw like three or four kids just sitting on the buddy bench without any friends to play with. And I went over it and we went, played soccer, played tag and played basketball together.
Do you notice that when people go out there that they're looking over at the bench and checking on people?
Yes, a lot.
That's awesome.
So you guys at Woodville spend a lot of time talking about setting goals and being a whole community. How do you feel like this whole project represents what you are at Woodville?
Um, ha- good because, and like excited because we are a kind school and we stand up to bullying and we don't let anyone like stand down. We help everyone stand up and that's who we are.
You guys are leaders.
Yep. Congratulations.
Well, Mrs. Kuhn has a presentation to you. We are very impressed. Thank you so much for coming and presenting. You all did a really good job.
And our third grade design. You're our design winner? That's fantastic. Do you want to be a designer?
Not really.
Not really.
It's a lot of work.
It is. Maybe there's a Christmas card in your future. Well, thank you so much. Let me get, we all get the microphone from...
I want to get a photo.
You want to get a photo?
And I've got some hands.
Well, we want to give a round of applause.
Yes, stay up there, guys, and turn and face the audience because I think they'll be... And Ms. Gervin, we'll have to talk. I want to hear more. I wrote it in my notebook about being a blue lobster, so... Okay, I'm going to visit, come visit, and you guys, I bet the kids can tell me all about it probably.
Well, thank you.
Yes.
All right, um, Mrs. Flaherty, do we have anybody for community forum? Okay, so before we get into the business section of our meeting, if anybody would like to leave, you may. They might quickly. We know the drill. We know. That's right. Principals, you have to stay. Yes.
Protection that was around the framework that we talked about the last couple of months disappears shortly after the last meeting. Uh, there's still a little bit of work that's happening, mostly just, you know, finishing up some areas of flashing, some punchless items, and then responding after weather events. If we notify them that, hey, we appear heavily here or there, if that happens. And it's only, I would say it's only happened one time, which is great, except for Blue Girl, they have significant break. And that's kind of our task to make sure everything is buttoned up and good, so... There's a tiny bit of work left, but for the most part, they are substantially complete. We're not asking for that documentation yet because they aren't ready to present that, but we're very close to that now. So, questions?
So, the fencing then is down?
Hang down.
Okay.
Three days after the last, or started to come down about three days after the last meeting.
So that's a sign that they're not going to be climbing up there much anymore, so that's good.
They're still climbing up some. It seems like every time we go by, I notice, you know, ladder bond that's been there for a few months, stuff like that. So they're getting everything buttoned up and are close to getting off site.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions?
So you said the testing process is kind of whether, whenever we happen to get it. Do they come back pretty easily in the future?
Yeah, I send Daniel and Andrew in this, an email, and they're usually out there that day or the next day.
No surprises then from your side?
No.
And nothing this weekend, no?
I did not get any reports today, which was, which is kind of exciting.
Okay, well, that's good.
So we are asking for approval of pay application number six in the amount of eighty-one thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars and fifty cents. And roughly, there's about ninety-one thousand dollars left to pay. Most of it is the required retention.
Okay, okay. All right, then I need a motion for the approval of pay application number six to Embass Roofing in the amount of eighty-one thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars and fifty cents for the Highlands Roof Replacement Project.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay. All right, thanks, Jerry.
Well, next we have an update on guaranteed energy savings project. As we've reported, all of the equipment has been installed. They are progressing on the controls aspect. I'm not going to say quickly, but they are progressing. From what we see on our end, we see a little bit more every week. We have a little bit more control over equipment every week. They have not finished kind of that retro commissioning where they go through. They've started, but they haven't finished where they've gone through the other buildings, trying to see what they may need to fix. Uh, they went through the high school right after, I would say right around Thanksgiving, and they sent us a list, some of which were things that, you know, they had to resolve and then some that this process of it identified some existing mechanical things that we may want to look into. So we're working together down that list. The majority of the work they have left is controls and then commissioning to make sure that, you know, when the controls say, do this, the equipment does that. So those are the final steps. Uh, there's still some work to be done, but they're making progress, like I said, weekly, a little bit better each week that we're getting close. We do have a pay application for you, but then that project, there's a little over six hundred thousand, I believe, remaining after this pay application that's represented in controls. The majority of the costs are commissioning and then about nine or 10% of CMTA's fee for kind of supervising everything, so...
We're already seeing some substantial savings too, is that right?
We are seeing very good savings so far. Our electric bills have been very positive in that regard. Yeah.
CMTA's been really great to work with. Um, we actually received an energy savings grant through Duke two weeks ago that we qualified for as a result of moving to LED lighting, so it's been a good thing.
That was a nice fifty thousand dollar check.
We'll take that. Anybody else have questions? I feel like we've been working on this for a while and it's been moving in the way that you wanted it to move, and we're seeing some results, so it's been...
No matter what, it's going to be short at Johnson. We can guarantee you that.
Middle school gym temperature seems to be getting better from not too long ago. That's probably what you're seeing, like the little by little different, I don't know, different changes they're making, right?
As we get more control over things, we can observe and then react.
Yeah.
See situations, and we can program things more to our liking. You know, prior to that, there's been a lot of situations where they've kind of put baselines in and it was more difficult for us to respond to individual wants and needs. But for the most part, we have, most areas of middle school where if a teacher wants it at this point, they're at that point.
Yeah. Long process.
We don't get a lot of complaints from the individuals about how, where their temperatures are because they have, you know, we have a lot of control over it.
Anybody else? Okay, I need a motion for the approval of pay application number nine to CMTA Incorporated in the amount of three hundred and twenty-five thousand, one hundred and thirty-seven dollars and three cents for the Guaranteed Energy Savings Contract Program.
I'll make a motion for the CMTA Pay Application Nine.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay.
All right, I believe we're starting to move back later.
Yes.
You're welcome.
Hi, good evening. I'm here to talk actually about the twenty-four, twenty-five calendar. And as it looks, it's very similar to this current school year. And so by standards, we need to go over a couple of topics that we would anticipate to be covered for our calendar and our school day. And that includes our start date and time, so those don't change. And then, if you keep it up there, that's good. I'll go on and talk through this. The actual layout of the calendar is very similar with August being that we have a opening day on a Thursday. That would be the eighth, the ninth, and the twelfth are PD days. We have then a day off, and then the fourteenth of August would be our first day for students. And then if we proceed down the calendar, we can see that it's very similar to, we have our later arrivals that are brown that fall within. And then we have actually for November, we have a four-day weekend with a Thursday, Friday off. And then if we look at our winter break, which is always interesting, we'll get off on a Friday, the twentieth, and then we'll come back. And we get, we come back actually through the following week and come back with a day during. And so with that, that is a longer break than, and we followed as a committee the requests to have at least two full weeks off. And we met and listened to all of the recommendations based on the survey results. And if we go toward the end, we'll highlight that. Can't forget about spring break. We have a Friday and a PD day, the twenty-eighth of March. And then the full week, which starts on March thirty-first, our closing day, or go to the very end for teachers right now, is scheduled for May twenty-eighth, but that may back up because we have our student last day on the twenty-second. No weather would mean that that would, then the closing day could be on that Friday, the twenty-third. So those light blue are just contingent on what our school year will fall with our weather-related influences. So that gives us all our requirements to have one hundred and seventy-seven days. We have eighty-six days in the first semester, ninety-one in the second, which is typical, but we have more in the second. But it fills our obligations for that also for the one hundred and eighty-eight, three days. And so if we go back to the text, Miss Harms, if you don't mind, I just want to make sure that we look to consider that in the actual hours inside of the campus and we've had further schedule, we have a couple of things that are different. First, high school desks have two shortened days, and those are both exam days. So that is, in the language, if we go down this, it's a tad bit more. We're not changing the minutes of instruction. And then we, the next paragraph discusses our arrivals, which are a total manual for our principal, that our staff get together to work through content or anything that would be related to the school professional development. And those are listed in that paragraph. We do far exceed our thousand sixty-two hours, so we meet that minimum for the state. And then finally, the last paragraph is about preschool. And preschool is just a tad bit different as they have a later start and they have some transition days. So their first day is actually going to be the twenty-seventh of August. Prior to that, the teachers and staff visit and follow up with co-visits and schedule meetings with our parents. And then they'll have the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth of August as transition days with their last day being May eighth of twenty-twenty-five. Any questions about that?
Anybody have questions?
Would you mind putting the calendar back up? Jamie, did we put makeup day in February for next year? Or no?
There isn't.
We didn't do one this time, okay.
Last year, we had one, February fourteenth on this calendar. Would be to make it a true four-day weekend, but we didn't do that for this year.
I couldn't remember. Just checking, thanks.
Well, I want to thank the calendar committee because, and I want to thank you too, because a lot goes into this, surveys, trying to get what people's wishes are. And it's a pretty tight schedule, so there's not a whole lot of wiggle room that you can go out there and be wild and crazy with your schedule. And we all, I mean, I saw those principals back there kind of gasp at that long Christmas break, so, I know. So, and that just happens every once in a while, and it just depends on where it lands and, you know, what day. Yeah, so it's a lucky one there. But I want to thank, and I also want to talk about late arrival. And I know you talked about it as you went through the calendar, but that's something that comes up on the surveys. And so the parents really want to know, you know, why we have those and what we use them for. And so Jamie and I and another teacher, I think, do a good job of explaining, but it would be really helpful for principals and teachers to explain to their parents exactly what's happening because it's really valuable. There's not a whole lot of time in a day that teachers can all get together and have common plan like that, so they're very valuable. And we know that sometimes they cause disruptions in homes with getting to school and that sort of thing, but we really appreciate that they give us that time to work through things, so...
Absolutely, and we were mindful of early release as well. That was a question, why can't we do that instead of late arrival? And so as a leadership team, I know the faculty have talked through that, but that does pose as many challenges as the opposite and is the preference of the district and each of the schools to maintain the later arrival as opposed to the work the teachers have to do and then transitioning back within the school space for the start of school season earlier.
So, we really appreciate all the work. Okay, do we need to vote on this?
We do, it's only official after we do.
Okay, all right. I don't see one way, things, but I need a motion for the, what's the word I want to use? To okay the calendar for, is it twenty-four, twenty-five? Okay, all those in favor?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, thank you. He's back.
So next up is the Highlands Athletic Complex at Power Park. No action required tonight, but just a simple update. The planned start of Phase One that was approved last month is actually, looks like it's going to be a week from today. That's kind of the day we gave, bring work, the go-ahead to start going down there, kind of mobilizing it, start clearing away some brush, maybe some trees in some areas, things like that, to start getting things ready for the bulk of the work. It won't start until maybe January or February. So the first part, as we've talked about, the first part of Phase One is going to be the work required to relocate utilities and relocate, kind of add that little section to Sergeant Avenue. And then the second part of Phase One is going to be kind of the reworking and changing of some of the elevations on Army Reserve Road as it goes between Sergeant and Carmel Manor Drive. The creation of a new entrance to what will be the future parking lot in Phase Two. And then the addition of sidewalks and other amenities that we have included in the project that will improve everything in that area for the community. The plan right now calls for some road closures to facilitate the work. So basically, from River Road to Sergeant Avenue will be closed for a few months, basically February through April. The contractor is planning on having the new Sergeant Avenue section open right about spring break. So they may coordinate a little bit of work where there's going to be a couple hour closures and things like that in that area for over our spring break. But that's way far away and a lot of things can impact schedule, weather and all that kind of stuff. So that's kind of what they're thinking now. And then once that section of road closes, then they'll start working, or opens, I should say. Then they'll start working on the Army Reserve section toward Carmel Manor, and that section will be closed as they work on it. So there's always going to be a second way out of that neighborhood. It might be all, you know, through the park or it might be right down River Road. But there will always be two avenues open. And Brian's been coordinating some communication through the city to make sure that all the citizens, not just the ones that live in that area, but everyone is kind of aware of what the plan is, what they're going to see. It's something we haven't gotten a ton of on, we've done a little bit of on our other projects, but this, just because of the nature of the location and how much it's going to, you know, we've never closed a road before. So we just want to be upfront, make sure that everyone understands what we're doing, when we're doing it, why we're doing it, and that we're always available to be responsive to their questions.
So a couple of things, Ann and Jerry did a really, really great job of giving a review of our initial progress meeting, our pre-construction meeting that we had with Riggler, black topping and paving. Couple of things just to emphasize that, I don't think you can say it enough. At no point will the Sergeant entrance into that neighborhood be shut down completely. So there is no closure that would limit that neighborhood only to having to use Delta. That was really important. It's been important on behalf of the board that you all have emphasized that to commit we've made to that neighborhood as well. It is possible there'll be a short period of time where there can be gravel that has to be traveled over. There is a possibility it could be a couple hour delay when we're switching from the newly constructed road from the current road. That is possible. I think it's also worth repeating that Jerry talked about, there are two ways to get to Sergeant Avenue currently. One comes through the park and one comes from River Road. When this project begins, one of those will be closed down through the duration of both phases of our project. But both of those will not be closed down. And when we are finished with this project, it's, again, it's important to emphasize that both entrances to Sergeant will be open in perpetuity when this entire project is finished. So I think that that's really important. Again, the city has been fantastic with us. We're working on communication. It'll probably be a mailing or a flyer to everyone that lives in that neighborhood at first. The city will take care of a lot of that. And then we will have very likely a place that lives on our website, that's a website that posts any kind of progress, that shows timelines, maybe some drone footage of what things is they, as they develop over time. We also, we do, although we haven't, we haven't been Phase Two, all arrows are pointing towards a hopeful summer start there, which does mean that will impact very likely the soccer season at Tower. And so Mr. Caldwell and Mr. Darnell are starting to work on what are the alternative locations for our soccer season. We've communicated to those teams that that's a likelihood, and we're working on other locations for training and then events for our soccer program. But it's exciting. We're going to see some movement. Some of that first movement will involve taking down not only the brush, but some trees in that area because we do relocate the road and the field eventually will be where some of that space is. But I also fully expect that as good stewards of that space and as a commitment to making sure it's a community project that we will, we will work to replant trees and to build shade for the future as well there in that sense. So very exciting and we will see some movement very soon.
Yeah, it's nice to hear, I heard the word, communication. You know, the neighborhoods, the teams affected, that very transparent and clear communication and ask questions if you don't feel you've been communicated with, so that's nice.
The last thing I'll say is it is a full project, so we've had city involvement. Obviously, there's going to be strong commitment on behalf of the Board of Education and District Resources. But I received an executive commitment from St. Elizabeth Hospital today on a charitable donation, which will be a substantial contribution over the next five years to also be part of paying for this project. So we're excited on that. We're working on a couple of other avenues as well.
Well, when you go out there on any, you know, random afternoon, you can see that. It's really a community area. People are walking, people are coming and kicking soccer balls. Those little children come over the hill from the daycare. from the daycare, you know, there, so it really is much more than just a soccer field. It's a community place that people convene and workout, so.
City's got some things going on up there too, so all the timing will really revamp the whole, whole area will be pretty cool.
Okay, anything else? All right, thanks, Jerry.
I think I was going to review the Arizona people data, and if you don't recall, that is something that we actually, it's a survey that we give our students once a year. So this year, it already began in October, and we reached out to our parents, and they then did have to opt-in with the experience for their, their children in grade three through twelve. And with that, we're going to look at some, uh, just district-level data for tonight. We started in, actually, it was twenty-eighteen the very first time. We don't have that comparison data specifically on here, we're going to start with twenty-nineteen. Uh, but we, we this year had one thousand five hundred and seventeen students take it over that period of time. It concluded right before we went for Thanksgiving break. We administered by, you know, classroom teachers, counselors, then to the student spaces within their classrooms. And just to remind you, this is your continuum that we would look at. They are mostly all the same except for the category that is red. Previously, it was at risk, now it is labeled may need assistance. And our domains have changed just a bit. We have, um, an additional grit and depression score for elementary. So we have some substandard scores that have remained the same, but we have some additions for this year as well. I know that you can't see the numbers, but I can tell you if you look at the colors, you can look at the story that, uh, we want to share. The blue line, um, in the, the graph to the left of the blue line is current year. So remember, Mr. Gilman loves to go backwards with his graphs. So we're starting with most current on the left. And when we look at that, we can see that sixty-eight of our percent of our students are either optimal or satisfactory. The greens, and that's what we want to make sure that we're looking at. And then the additional students that are orange or red, um, we can see our trend data as we go through the year back to twenty-nineteen, that there have been some fluctuations, but this tells a better story about the greens. And so we're looking at how many students are either satisfactory or optimal from current moving back. Understanding that current year is different for elementary, it's actually a little bit harder to get a better score in elementary this year, that we remain the same overall, we're looking at our percent of satisfactory or optimal, which means that, um, we have concerns and at risks that are similar. Uh, we actually were right on the same percentages, and we can see the trend data over time. We're elevated just a tad bit if we look at all the way back to twenty-nineteen, but still the same as last year. And then I don't expect us to read all of this, but it is here for documentation and for the public to review. The two highlighted sections are the bullet are the most important. It indicates to the sixty-eight percent is extremely important and accolades from, uh, Rich Gilman, who does put this together when he looks at regional data and other schools, that, uh, we are strong compared at other schools within our region. But the second bullet, we actually in almost all areas, almost all, and you'll see what I mean by that, we either remain the same or regroup compared to the previous year, so twenty-twenty-two. And I'm going to go over those, the lists below indicate which ones we improved or which ones we stayed up very similar to. But we can see that in evidence of the green when we're going through the slides now. So if we look at overall elementary, all three together, we can see that we have grown from the second to the left column, which would have been fall twenty-two, to the left column, um, twenty-twenty-three. Our score for ostracism doesn't fall in line with all the others, you work backwards with that. So you want your number to be lower there as opposed to greater, but all of the other, um, index numbers show that. Uh, we have made gains with global satisfaction, positive school experience, and hope for elementary went down a small bit. So we can see that for positive school experiences, five point two four, I'm sorry, five point two one versus five point one four for this current school year. Hope was, maybe I should do this, four point eight two versus four point seven nine, which I would think that Dr. Richardson would say that that probably is not statistically significant. And then grit, we noticed that there are no other scores, that is because it is new for this year. Then if we look at the middle school, the middle school had all positives. Now that I've evidenced the trends, I'm not going to go over each of the numbers, but we can see that most all of their experiences that, that were shared by students, uh, showed a positive growth. And we can see that for ostracism, they went from two point zero eight to two point one five. And then the positive school experiences, four point eight seven, went down to four point seven eight. So again, not an extreme number there. And then for high school, we can say the same rule in every location, everywhere, when we're looking at the, the indicators that we had to review today. So, um, that kudos to them, that they had students share very much positive results compared to the previous year. They are so strong altogether in all schools, but they did show growth. And then I wanted to really quickly share this, and I want to tell you the story because I don't expect you to understand this. But if we look at the top, that's the middle school. And the middle school dark blue line going from the far right to the left shows us anxiety numbers. And those are five percent, and then they go six percent, six percent, six percent, six percent. So they're staying pretty stable with anxiety numbers. And then green, the green line for middle school is depression. And those are percentages, again, four, four, five, six, seven, if we're looking at it, so we might just have had it. And then high school has a little bit of a dip, so their trends opposite. Anxiety, again, the dark blue line, six, 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 four percent. And then depression, the numbers in nineteen started at eight, and they went five, six, five, and now three percent for that. So they are showing that students communicating about that, um, that they are, um, expressing feelings of depression or having issues with depression. If we look at at-risk ranges for ostracism, traumatic stress, and self-criticism, those are three other areas. For the middle school, for the dark blue line, that's ostracism. That did, you can see that has gone up just a tad bit. The middle line, traumatic stress, those are stable. In twenty-nineteen, we're at six, and now we're at six percent. And then self-criticism just started in twenty-twenty, we did not ask questions related to that prior to that. So that did go from two, three, three, then to four percent for that. High school, we're looking at the dark blue line, that is again ostracism, so nine, seven, six, six, seven. And then we show, um, traumatic stress being, um, that we started at six and now we're at four. And then self-ostracism, three, went up a tad, went down a tad bit, two, and then back up to three. So again, we're talking percentages, so if you recognize, I did not say a number that would even close to ten percent and we're thinking about our. So the sixty-eight percent of our students are performing well. These are the students that we then take an opportunity to have our counselors work with, um, direct conversations with our parents or our students if needed. And we have some trend data to help the schools then, because that's what our next steps would be for the numbers that we've shared. And then finally, on a few occasions, we do report out to parents, um, after we've had either a face-to-face or a verbal phone call, um, to discuss what we have seen. And so there are reports out there that do help parents understand, and then if there would be a third-party vendor or a, a medical provider that's working with a student, we would be able to provide a parent with that if they request, so. That is where we are right now. And we will then share this with our schools, our schools, our counselors. In January, we'll discuss this at our third quarter counseling meeting, and we'll discuss next steps to, to what we're going to be doing at the school at district level.
Any, anybody have any questions? Well, I ask every year, were there any surprises on that? Mostly, uh, our counselors know those children who need the extra help.
Absolutely, for the most part, uh, they've identified the students prior to them having the opportunity to take the poll, but they provide additional data. And now that we've had the baseline, let's say if you were in ninth grade and you can see your previous scores, you can see the individual student trend data to see, okay, if they are showing signs of self-criticism, where do they fall with previous two years, and what's going on with their life, and how can we help them through that if they have added stress? So it's going to benefit, they dangerously are all identified prior to being in the search.
And that is a benefit at the high school of, of following kids, ooh, I kind of, did it sound my way. Uh, following kids nine through twelve, because you would be able to see kind of the ebbs and flows and, and what's going on and, and, you know, be more of a personal counselor like that, so that's good. Thank you. Okay, committee, um, board committee updates. Does anybody have any updates they want to talk about? You want to talk about salary or budget?
Sure. Well, we had, uh, we had both. So, uh, budget, budget looks healthy. Uh, it's in, it's in really good shape, uh, with, with all the projects we have going on. But, you know, I think most of the discussion around budget is making sure that, um, in order to set up, uh, secure for the future, but also that we're set up to take care of our teachers and staff, and, and that's really a priority for this board and the, the boards in the past as well. But to make sure that we're not only being able to give salary increases every year, but we're able to give substantial ones to keep our, um, staff at the top, the top of the salary scale, so. I feel really good about that where we are, and, and it looks like based on, you know, good work within the schools of cost savings, and at the same time, um, you know, the budget's probably healthier than it's been in a while. So those two things together, it looks like we're, we're in good shape too.
It was, it's a, it's a healthy budget, so, and, and we really appreciate all the work that you and Andy have done and lots of meetings and know exactly where we are on things, so, that's good.
Well, it's been, throughout the, throughout the entire district, there have just been responsible decisions to make sure our students have the best that is in front of them. We need to make sure that our teachers are equipped with what they need, the resources that they need, uh, the, the facilities that, that are, are expected, the programming that, that we want to make sure that we have, but also do it within a responsible means. And, and because of that and the commitment of the board and, and the, and the full community, we're in a good position to, to, to continue that way, so, and do some creative things potentially.
And did you have a committee you were going to talk about?
I was just, you shared the, the big thing as far as education foundation with the announcement of the teachers, so.
So we'll keep talking about the Nesties, because that really is a, um, it's a very cool program to come to, it's fun, so.
The teacher scholarship committee is meeting on Thursday, so stay tuned for that.
So you want to explain what that is?
You know, it's my first year on this committee. So I am getting, getting, getting an education this week, and so I'm excited to kind of dive into it. As I understand, there are six scholarships to award, six teacher applicants, and, um, we reviewed the applications this week.
So stipends for the board, one of the things that we do, um, is we work for Spiritware, but, um, we, um, will turn our money back in, our stipends back in, and we give scholarships to teachers, and we.
They don't tell you that before you.
Before you run. So we always fund five, and I think, um, we just have some really good applicants, so. Again, it's about the dare-to-dream kind of things of supporting our teachers, so.
And it's a really great thing, because we, the other half is, is for future teachers. So there's a future teacher scholarship that's supported, uh, through, through board stipends. And then this one is, is, is named after Gail Federley, uh, who was a, a board member that passed away while serving the board. And so it's very appropriate as well.
Anything else? Okay, all right, consent agenda. You all had time to read that, so I need a, uh, motion with all the board members having had the opportunity to review and pursue any questions about all of the items contained therein. I need a motion for the approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and then, um, other business, do you have anything to add? Okay, we did get a thank you note from, uh, when you get thank you notes from elementary school teachers, they look like that. It's awesome, it's awesome, um, for our cookies that we took, yes, so. We can say that. And we have our, our, uh, Christmas cards up there, and we want to thank you for those too, so.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays, yes.
See you in the news.
Okay, with that, we are adjourned, thank you.